Welcome to the June 14th meeting of the zoning board of examiners and appeals. Please take role.
Timothy Bigg, Dean Carr, Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Here.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick, John Dunham.
Here.
Deanna Walad.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any minutes to review? There are no minutes. Special order of business or executive sessions and any disclosures? Member Williams?
Yes, thank you. For the record, I was not present at the February 9, 2012, meeting, but I have listened to the meeting audio and reviewed the material, so I'm prepared to participate in approval of resolution 2012-003.
Thank you. Member Denny?
I was not present at the April 12, 2012, meeting and will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-009.
Okay, member Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also was not present at the April 12, 2012, meeting and will also be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-009.
Okay. I have a disclosure tonight. And the case of the first case on the agenda tonight for Jose Ramos. My brother-in-law owns the veterinary clinic next door to this property, and I don't believe that that constitutes a conflict for me, but I wanted to disclose it. And I don't know if we need to vote on it, but I'd like to get a vote on it, just the same. So, is there a motion? Member Ron?
Thank you. I've moved to direct Board Chairman Dunham to participate in case number 2012-070.
Is there a second on that? Member Denny?
Yes, I second the motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, I'll be voting on or participating in that decision. Okay, let's move down to the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to amend the agenda to remove resolution 2012-009? We're lacking the minimum number of members to approve that resolution. I have a motion from member Fink and seconded by member Ron. Any discussion? Okay. Resolution 2012-009 is removed from the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Member Denny's moved to approve, and member Fink is seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, let's vote on the consent agenda. Okay, let's move down to appearance requests. There are no appearance requests. There doesn't appear to be any unfinished business or unfinished public hearings. We'll move down to the regular agenda. Nothing under there. Public meetings or public hearings. Our first case is 2012-070. The order of business tonight will be that the chair will introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance not to exceed 10 minutes. On the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to staff through the chair. The applicant shall be given a presentation not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing, though, shall then be open to the public for testimony. Each person will have three minutes. Representatives of groups will have five minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall then proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. Staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the board and the chair ask for a positive motion from the board. And every decision of the board shall clearly state on the face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involving the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So with that, I will read into the record. Our first case tonight is case 2012-070. The petitioner is Jose Ramos. It's a variance for an encroachment into the required yard setbacks. The variance request is from AMC 2140, 140H, 2C, minimum yard requirements for the B-1A district, to allow a proposed addition to an existing structure to encroach into the rear yard setback, College Village subdivision, block one, lot nine, located at 2052 East Northern Lights Boulevard. Lot's currently zoned B-1A, and it's located in Rogers Park, Community Council. Like to hear from staff the sufficiency of notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 22 of this year, 130 public hearing notices were mailed. One notice was returned stating no objection. One notice was returned stating that the alley is heavily used by the community and by others going to and from Kinko's and other businesses along East Northern Lights Boulevard. The concern is that the addition may infringe on the use of the alley. Also, there are two late-on-the-table handouts. One is just the posting affidavit, and the other one is a letter from an abutting property owner objecting to the granting of the variance. That's all I have.
Okay. Any comments from the board on sufficiency of notice? Please continue with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Standard number one does not appear to be met. The petition site is level and not impacted by natural features such as wetlands, streams, drainage ways. There are no physical impediments to limit the development of the petition site. The lot was platted in 1959, and the lot was developed in 1962, which predated the implementation of the B-1 district regulations that imposed the requirement for a 25-foot rear yard setback on a commercial lot adjoining a residential district. However, the rear yard required was reduced to five feet if the commercial lot adjoined an alleyway. The reduction of the required 25-foot rear to five feet for a B-1 zone lot that abuts an alley was eliminated by the Anchorage Municipal Code effective April 1, 1984. The encroachment, that's the subject of this variance request, is 14 feet into the rear yard setback, and a site plan showing what the site would look like begins on page four of your packet. Also, the public comments that are within the packet are on pages 41 and 42, and of course, the late comment that I pointed out. In regards to standard number two, the standard does not appear to be met. There are no unique physical characteristics to the petition site that differentiate this lot from other lots in the surrounding area with the same zoning district. The applicant has referred to lots east and west of the petition site with buildings constructed to the rear property boundary. However, the circumstances of the development of these lots is not known. These could enjoy legal non-conforming rights. Standard number three appears to be partially met. The size of the addition may be required to meet the needs of the growing business enterprise. It is not known whether a smaller addition to the restaurant that would not encroach into the required yard setback could serve the needs of the business. Architecturally, the location of the addition may be the most feasible way to provide additional space and result in the loss of fewer parking spaces. As the lot was developed prior to the implementation of the zoning regulations, the location of the building on the lot does not limit the potential for expansion of the restaurant. Standard number four appears to be substantially met. The property to the east, the property to the east and west of the petition site is developed with retail, commercial, and medical office uses and associated off-street parking lots. The petition site has been developed at least as long as the residential use is on the south side of the site. The addition to the restaurant, this two-story addition, should not affect the health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding commercial and residential uses. Standard number five appears to be substantially met. The restaurant is a permitted principal use of the B-1A district. The granting of the variance would allow the expansion, but would not allow, is not a use variance. Standard number six appears to be substantially met. The petition site was developed prior to the implementation of and subsequent amendments to the B-1A zoning regulations. The proposed addition to the existing restaurant will not introduce any new use, which has not been going on since the property was originally developed in 1962. There are no adverse effects to the health, safety, and welfare, and as expected, there are no adverse effects expected from the expansion of the existing use. Standard number seven appears to be substantially met. A variance is the minimum variance needed to allow the addition to be constructed as proposed by the petitioner. Because only five of the seven standards appear to be substantially met, the department recommends denial. However, if after the public hearing, the board finds that the standards are substantially met, the department recommends conditions one through three on page 10 of the packet. The first one is just to verify parking, which I believe is met, but it's still good to have that condition because they're relying on joint parking agreements. And that landscaping, meeting the buffer landscaping standard, is installed along the south property boundary under the requirements of a building permit that's required by the zoning. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. McLaughlin, I do have a question about the public comment that was laid on our table. In the first paragraph, there's reference to strenuous objection to the reversal of a decision previously made in this matter. Can you speak to at all what that references, reversal of a decision previously made?
I can't say for sure. I think that the neighbor is referring to a, in the neighboring lot, and it may be in the as-built, the owner of the neighboring lot intended to put in a cellphone tower and collect at least part of their property and take up some of their parking with a cellphone tower as a money generation. And I overheard that there was objection to that, and so there may be some confusion because these two cases are happening right around the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? The applicants have any questions, or staff? With this done? No. We'll move on to hear a presentation from the petitioner. Is the petitioner here?
Madam?
It appears the petitioner's not here, and I guess at this point, I'd entertain a motion to suspend or delay the, postpone the hearing. I have a motion from member Fink, and I need a second from member Williams.
We're looking for a specific date we're postponing this to?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to postpone this to the next meeting?
The July meeting? You concur with that, Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. Okay, we're postponing the hearing of case 2012-070. And moving on to the next case on our agenda, which is 2012-069. The petitioners are here. Mr. Havlock, John Havlock, are you here? Okay, good. Let's go ahead and hear from staff.
On May 22, there were 104 public hearing notices mailed as of this writing. One response was received in support of the granting of the variance. No comments were received from the south addition community council. None were received in opposition to the granting of the variance. There is a late comment that is late on the table that recommends approval of the variance. That's all.
All right. Any questions about the sufficiency of notice from the board? Seeing none, go ahead and make your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a variance to allow a two-car garage with a pitched roof to encroach 100 percent into the five-foot side yard setback. The petitioner began construction of the garage without a building permit. Currently, the garage exists in the form of a carport. Standard one is not met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances of the land which warrant the granting of the variance. The lot is not affected by streams or wetlands. The lot is served by public water and sewer, and is the same rectangular shape as other lots in the same district. Also, the lot exceeds the minimum lot area in our 2M district by 1,000 square feet. The lot is approximately four feet higher than West 16th Avenue, which runs along the south lot boundary. The lot has a retaining wall inbound of the sidewalk. This slope issue is not unique to the property, as it affects properties on both sides of West 16th Avenue. There is a 20-foot wide sewer easement along the north lot boundary of the petition site. This easement limits the developable area of the property, but is not unique to this property as it affects the neighbors to the east. The alleyway runs along the west lot boundary. An alleyway is not a street, and therefore, this is not a corner lot, and the west lot boundary is considered a side yard, thereby requiring a side yard setback. Standard number two is not met. There are no physical circumstances of the land which prevent the owner from having a garage with access to an alley. In fact, they have a garage now. The petitioner had sufficient space in the rear yard to build a garage and meet the five-foot side yard setback. However, two-car garages are a common right of enjoyment in the neighborhood. Note that there are five other garages on this block, which are built near their rear lot lines. At least one of the garages appears to be built to the lot line abutting an alleyway. This is permitted because those are our interior lots, and garages may be built up to the rear lot line abutting an alleyway. Standard number three is not met. There are no peculiarities of the lot. The law is essentially the same as the others in the same zoning district. The need for the variance is a result of the petitioner's desire to keep an existing garage built without a building permit. The garage could have been built while meeting the yard setbacks. Standard number four is met. The variance will not adversely affect the adjacent properties because the variance is for a side yard encroachment abutting an alleyway. The neighbors on all four sides along the alleyway are not negatively affected. Standard number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. Standard number six is met. The garage will not cause a fire separation concern. Standard number seven is not met. A two-car garage can be built on the property without encroaching into the five-foot side yard setback. The need for the variance is a result of construction without a building permit. The variance is noticeable as it is 100 percent variance. No variance is necessary to make it possible for reasonable use of the land. Therefore, the department recommends denial. If after the public hearing, the board finds that all seven standards have been substantially met, then the department recommends the approval be subject to conditions one through six on page six. Have one more comment. Condition number six is, oh, I'm sorry, condition number five is not necessary. Condition number five is unnecessary. The petitioner is working on establishing non-conforming rights and has obtained a warranty deed for both lots. So, I'm sorry, condition number five is unnecessary. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to refer everyone to page eight in the right-of-way exhibit for my question here, and hopefully that can help me explicate the question I'm asking. I'm a little confused about why there is no application of Lot 3 as being an interior lot. I'm assuming that Block 42C lots 1 and 2 would be considered interior lots, but Lot 3 would not based on the staff packet's description. And if you could explain that in a little more detail, I'd appreciate it.
Well, that's an excellent question. Staff hadn't considered that. I think that the Land Use Review Division would find that because this is a registered warranty deed, that it should be considered one lot as it is built, the way the dark black line shows. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Petitioner have any questions for staff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
With that, I'll ask the petitioner to come forward and state his first and last name for the record and spell your last name, and you'll have 10 minutes to make a presentation.
Thank you. And my name is John Havlock, H-A-V-E-L-O-C-K. I'm here with my wife, Mona, and who is the co-owner with me. I'd like to, on this lovely day, thank you for spending your time to come after we've had all this rain and do a public duty. I really appreciate that, like other citizens who may not have an opportunity to express it. I have no real exceptions to take to the report of the staff. I think they did a good job. I mean, I just think the question is one of emphasis, and I do take a somewhat different view, obviously, of the exceptions that they take. I noticed that one of the first parts of the program that you brought out was whether there were a couple of people apparently filed non-objections, and Mona went out and walked around the streets and got a few additional signatures with your permission. Can I put these in the record?
Yes.
Can I give it to you? Is that the?
Yes, give it to me, and I'll make sure that the rest of the board sees it. Thank you.
And incidentally, when she walked around and getting those signatures, she didn't found anybody refused to sign, or just not everybody was home. That's all. I have to start off with sort of a mea culpa because I should have known that I needed a permit to build this thing. I had a guy that worked in construction told me that if it was under 5,000, that you didn't have to, you know, for some, he was wrong. And I should have done that, and we have, of course, an application pending. We really need this facility. It's, Mona and I are, I'm going to have my 80th birthday next month. As you'll see by looking at, you get copies of the pictures too, don't you, in your file? As you can see, there was a lot of snow this last winter, and I am very grateful that I had a carport to keep my car in because we do have to use a car on a daily basis. The building is quite an old one. It's a log house. I think you probably also have diagrams, do you, of the house and the, as well as the neighborhood? And the question Mr. Ron raised of the lot configuration, someone way back in the '40s, our house is built in the late '30s or the early '40s, and somebody decided that those two lots, the ends, should be divided the other way. And there is, to our east, there is a building that also covers two lots, two halves of the lot. So, that's the structure there, and it goes back quite some way. Turning to the, maybe, I may run through these pictures a little bit, and you can see why the building is sort of where it is. Picture 22 is taken from 16th, looking up the alley, and our house is on the right there. You can't see the carport thing there, but you can see the rise, that concrete wall, and the alley rises up faster there. So, it means that I have no building capability on that part of the lot at all. And as the staff pointed out, on the other side, there is a 20-foot easement that also limits it. And as I mentioned in my written remarks, the emergency access to my neighbor on G Street Street through the back would be blocked if I put in some kind of a garage there. So, there were a lot of good reasons for putting it where it was, including sort of conformity with the architecture of the old building. I ended up with an eight-inch, on one corner of it, sticks out eight inches in the alley, which is not part of what you deal with here, but it's a result of, you may notice, the house is not quite north-south. They weren't building things north-south quite exactly in those days, they just tried. And so the garage is built to be parallel with the house, not with the map. As far as the, as I say, I think the, you look at page, picture 23, you'll see that's looking south, and the same down the alley towards where the last picture was taken. You'll notice the house on the right is, unfortunately, I had a lot of colored pictures. I don't know what happened to them. I guess they just do them black and white, huh? So that the lath doesn't show up. But the house on the right is also, does not have the setback. I don't know whether he got a variance back then, or what, but it's, he's, is in the same thing as I am. If you look at 24, picture 24 is looking north up the alley, further beyond my structure, and you'll see that garage there, the laths don't show up all that well, but that garage building is also within the five foot. I might add, I am puzzled, I'll admit, as to why there's a different standard for those than there is for me. I don't, and the staff has not been able to explain to me why that is, except it might have been a mistake in drafting or something, but, you know, there's no, the garage, it's not like it was imposing any visual problem on people seeing in or out of the alley or anything at this. But that's the way the ordinance is, and that's the way we're following it. So, in 25, same thing, that same building looking south, and you can see Judge Fool's house on the right there at the back, which is, as I say, the one that also was, is in violation, although I assume he got some kind of a variance when he rebuilt that house. And if you go on up the alley, as these things do, you can, you can see that the, they support, the staffs notice that there are a lot of garages and stuff. There is nothing unusual about my place, except that it, frankly, architecturally speaking, it's a lot nicer than some of the other stuff there that is on up the alley that also intrudes on the five-foot space.
Mr. Havlock, you have about two minutes left.
I have what?
You have about two minutes left.
Two minutes. Well, the, I just hope in the, that you'll give favorable consideration. I have written down the reasons why I think that we do comply with conditions 1, 2, 3, and 7. He says that we're, the staff says that we're in violation, and I think we're close enough to the game that I would hope that you would allow the variations. I do have, if you want them, you know, I've spent some money on Land Tech to get big pictures. I don't know, you got, what do you, I don't know if I can beat it, but larger pictures of the, if you want them, they're helpful to you at all, for both the lot structure and the, and the outline of the house and the lot.
If you'd like to submit them, we can take them, but again, we'll have to hold on to them for 30 days.
I don't think, I retained a copy somewhere.
Okay.
If I may. Thank you very much for your attention. I'll, if you have any questions, I may respond.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Havlock, I'm curious about why you put the carport in the location that you did. Can you speak to that at all?
Well, I wanted to line it up with the, architecturally speaking, with the existing building, rather than having it separate. I also wanted it close enough to the door of the house, so we could get to the garage with a minimum of shoveling of a snow pass and walking that way. So, that was, the only option would be to put it in the space to the north, more to the north there. It also ends the croquet, not croquet, and the badonson cross facility that are available in that open area, and we occasionally, we have a block party in there every year, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Staff, do you have any questions?
Mr. Havlock, if, Mr. Havlock?
Hi.
Oh, just make sure to speak into the microphone if there's a follow-up question. Just so that it's on the record, please speak into the microphone, just to make sure you're clear, so that it's easier for staff to do the follow-up. Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
Any other questions, staff?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Havlock.
Thank you very much.
So, I've got to consult my order of business here. Staff, do you have any rebuttal information to provide?
I do not.
Okay. Are there any questions by the board, or for staff? Seeing none. Mr. Havlock, you have one more opportunity to provide rebuttal, if you'd like.
Nothing to rebut.
Could you come up to the mic and...
If the staff had no comments, I have no rebuttal.
Okay. Mr. Ron?
Mr. Chair, if you would, just open it up for public comment, or at least note for the record.
Okay. Let's open it up for public hearing, then. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the variance before the board? Seeing none, I will, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take the matter to the board here. So, the public hearing's closed, and I'll entertain a motion from the board on the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number 2012-069, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.045G, minimum yard requirements to allow a two-car garage five feet into the five-foot side yard setback. According to department recommendations, what should be reordered as 1 through 5, with the elimination of number 5, as previously discussed, which was the obtain warranty deeds for both lots, on page 6 of the staff packet.
Ms. Danny?
Yes, I second the motion.
Mr. Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do intend to support the motion. I'll walk through in a little bit of detail findings 1, 2, 3, and 7, and try and keep it brief. Based on testimony from the petitioner regarding slope of the lot and the easement, sewer easement, in addition to the age of the structure, and what I find to be an unusual application of non-interior lot to at least a portion of the property, I find that standard 1 is at least partially met, if not fully met. Carry on to standard 2, those physical circumstances as described and related to standard 1, I think that standard 2 is met as well. Regarding standard 3, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special circumstances and conditions do not result from the actions of the applicant. Yes, in fact, as we know, and as testified to by the petitioner, we're here because the structure was constructed without a building permit. However, who knows? If that building permit were issued, there still may have been some mistakes, and the petitioner could still be here before us today. I think the hardship as related to the physical circumstances aren't the cause of the petitioner. I find that standard 3 is met. I agree with staff that standards 4, 5, and 6 are met. Standard 7, I believe, is at least partially met. In this case, I feel that a reasonable use of the land is a use in which the existing structures are utilized where possible. Now, in saying that, I'm not endorsing construction of a carport or structure without a permit, and construction, or construction of a structure that is in any way in violation of a zoning ordinance. So, I'll qualify that by saying a reasonable use of the land is to site a structure where it's safest and of optimal use to the property owners. As testified by the petitioner, they wanted the garage close to the door for safety reasons, and also locating the carport or garage further to the north truly does cut into what little yard the property owner has. For those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Danny?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Ron, and I do intend to support the motion. Looking at the layout of the lot and the fact that is, the back half of the lot is an interior lot, so allowing for a more complete use of the lot with the placement of the carport/garage, and the fact that the building predates any kind of building codes and land use codes, I also agree with Mr. Ron. And the fact that, you know, there is quite a bit of slope to the lot, so that, and with the sizable easement across the back of the lot taking up for sewer, that that's, that was the most practical place to put the carport or garage. And looking at through the neighborhood and the photographs that the petitioner provided, it does appear to be that most of the other lots also have a two-car garage, so trying to limit this particular lot to just a single-car garage or a smaller garage would not be in keeping with the neighborhood. So, I do intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Williams?
I also intend to support the motion, and I would only add that there appears to be substantial support from all of the neighbors as well. I counted at least 11 either letters specifically in support or signatures in support, and so that definitely weighs heavy on my support for the motion as well.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's vote. The motion passes with the unanimous yes vote. I have to read one little thing here. Every decision of the board, let's see, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on the face, it's, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with Superior Court. So, it's, parties have the opportunity to file an appeal within 30 days of notice to you, either by mail or other means. But until that time, consider the, the variance granted. Staff, did you have, okay. Well, with that, I don't have anything else. Let's move down to the rest of the agenda here. Any reports for the board? Seeing none. Board members, comments? No comments, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Williams?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Seconded by Ms. Danny, and we are adjourned.